Good evening and welcome everyone, Rutherford County Schools. Our work session tonight, first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance led by Board Member Wayne Blair.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Commons, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Look at number four, is there anything on four on the agenda that you would like moved?
I have an objection to item thirteen. I'd like for item thirteen to be considered in three votes.
What? Any objection to that? I think we can do that. Anything else? Number five, consent agenda, any problem there?
I had a couple of areas there. The first are the minutes from the February 1st special call policy committee meeting. It's reflected in the minutes that the revised policy, 5.802, was revised to reflect the Director of Schools brochure for the Director Position Search. I don't know exactly why we've been provided with a copy of that brochure, but there was specific discussion that evening that it was not to revise the Director of Schools brochure for the Director Position Search.
Okay, 5.802, is that right?
Correct.
And qualifications to delete with preference for a doctorate degree, is that what you're questioning?
No, it's after the vote, nine yes, six no, motion passed. The revised policy amends qualifications to delete with preference for a doctorate degree to reflect the Director of Schools brochure for the Director Position Search. I would like to omit the, to reflect the Director of Schools brochure for the Director of Position Search. The motion did indeed pass, but whether or not it has any impact on the Director of Schools brochure for the Director Position Search was specifically spoken of that evening as being a decision for a future board to make.
Okay, so you want a separate vote on that Thursday night?
No, I'm saying the minutes are inaccurate.
Board?
Ms. Bush, who was chairing that committee is present, if we could ask her?
Yes, just a correction, I was not chairing the committee, but I do, I was responsible for the minutes. We can change that language to reflect Mr. Holliday's objection to those minutes and have that changed to Ms. Joyce by Thursday night.
Michael, can you make that correction on the consent agenda for Thursday night, please? Anything else on the consent agenda?
The purchase request that we have for the lights at Segal, it's spoken of here that that's going to be funded through capital projects. When we had discussed this previously, it was discussed that it would come from the maintenance budget. Are those two budgets one and the same? It will come from the maintenance budget. Thank you.
Where is that, Ms. Holliday, if you would, just to help me?
Sure, that is in item D. The Engineering and Construction Department would like to purchase the baseball field LED lighting package from Musco Sports Lighting LLC using NJPPA contract, et cetera, at Segal High at a cost of $161,042 to be funded through, and it should read, "The Maintenance Budget."
That's correct, yeah. Ms. Michael, is that okay? Okay, thank you, Ms. Michael, thank you, Bush, appreciate it. Anything else, Board? If not, number six, which is on page five, may or may not have visitors, we're going to have a recognition on that night, Mr. Director, please.
This is the Amazing Shake competition, and this is Walter Hill School Hadet, so they will be here for our participation to look at, and we need to schedule another group too, probably not for this session, but Blackman Cheerleaders won the national championship, so we might get them in a future meeting, too.
A lot of good publicity the Blackman Cheerleading Squad did, and I think they went through quite a bit of a problem right before that, I believe. I think they had a member get sick and they had to revise their routine. It's really amazing, amazing what's going on out there, but the member is okay, I understand, but couldn't perform.
This is not their first national championship either.
No, wow. I don't know how many they've got, but the trophy case is about full, I would think. I don't know how many that they have. Number eight, if there's nothing else on that, learning grant?
This is approval of the Work-Based Learning Grant. The Work-Based Learning Grant from the Tennessee Department of Economic Development is presented for approval for the funding period of February 12th, 2018, through May 31st, 2019. The grant is for $25,000. The Work-Based Learning Grant provides funding for 12 to 14 of our teachers for a teacher externship program with our area industry partners. The motion is to approve the Work-Based Learning Grant from the Tennessee Department of Economic Development for $25,000 to provide funding for 12 to 14 of our teachers for a teacher externship program with our area industry partners. Ms. Pilgrim, she was at the CTE Day on the Hill, and she called late this afternoon, but Mr. Zago can answer some questions if you'd like to know a little bit more about that.
Questions, Board, for the Director or Mr. Zago? Number nine?
Number nine, this is the nine A, is Eagleville Sewer Easement. Eagleville View Village Partners, a partnership composed of John Jones and Craig Sewell, has requested to tie into existing sewer line in front of Eagleville High School on Highway 99. The Engineering and Construction Department has looked into the proposed connection and found that the connection will not impair service to the school, but that a new sewer line will be required and that certain improvements to the existing school connection should be required prior to allowing the connection. All of the costs for the new line and improvements will be responsibility of the requesting partnership. A backflow prevention valve will be required to be installed to ensure no interruption of service to the school. The City of Eagleville has agreed to accept the maintenance of the new sewer line in front on the school up to this valve, so that the Board of Education will no longer be responsible for maintenance of the sewer line in front of the school. Recommend approval, the motion is to grant a non-exclusive sewer easement to the City of Eagleville along Highway 99 for improvements to the sewer line, on the condition that Eagleview Village Partners install a new sewer line, make all modifications to the existing line requested by the Board of Education, Engineering and Construction Department, clean and level any disturbed ground after the installation, and cede and straw the same to the approval of the Engineering and Construction Department. Mr. Clardy can speak to that if you'd like to.
Board? Art B.
Art B is the Building Program Request. Director Odom and staff have pinpointed the next areas for concentration of the building program. The next new school that should be built is Rocky Fork Elementary, for a total of $36,438,227, with $3,680,000 currently funded for land, design, and site, leaving $32,758,227 to be funded. The next addition that should be funded and built is Rock Springs Elementary School addition, for a total of $9,150,000. The next properties that should be funded for the I-840 Highway 96 corridor land for a three-school complex at an estimated cost of $4,750,000, and the land for the South Musburger area for a two- or three-school complex at a cost of $3,250,000. The total funding for these projects is $49,908,227. Recommend approval, the motion is to approve construction and property as presented, for a total of $49,908,227. This should be presented to all necessary subcommittees and county commission as soon as possible. They did ask us last week when we took the five-year building plan to budget and finance, well, they commented that in our timeframe, some of these things are going to need to be started, and we said, yes, you know, they are. I would like, when you do this, kind of with the understanding that if we decide to approve all of this, that if we happen to get there and they want to break it apart or something like that, I don't really want it all or nothing. I would like some of the buildings to delay a month or something on one part, but my priority number one would be to try to go ahead and get Rocky Fork Elementary going. You know, we've designed, it's all done, everything is ready for the bid, you know, basically on that, so that's a priority, then we'll kind of work through the other, present it all to them, but I'm just trying to contemplate exactly what they might request or do. But these are not only projects we need, but we need to bring something to them.
Board? Part C.
Part C is inspections for auxiliary campus buildings. Rutherford County Schools Engineering and Construction Department requested a proposal from consolidated roofing inspections for inspections of all the campus auxiliary buildings throughout our system. There's a total of 246 of these buildings that are not being used for classroom space. They can be from a small storage shed to baseball or softball facilities. There's a total of 390,917 square feet under roof in these buildings. The cost for inspection per building is $75 each. That brings the total inspection cost to $18,450. The inspection report will include the building location, the building square footage, deficiency, and severity of deficiencies, and identify the responsible party for maintenance and upkeep. Again, this is a professional service. So recommend approval, the motion is to approve auxiliary campus building inspections by consolidated roofing inspections at $75 each, for a total of $18,450 as presented, and again, this is a professional service. And I believe this is the same company that inspects our main buildings, which we've done business with for quite a few years now.
Questions from the Board, from Mr. Clardy or the Director? Art D.
D is the Oakland Middle School Sewer Fee. On an inspection after the construction of Oakland Middle School, Musburger Water and Sewer Department found a sag in the 8-inch underground line in Cushing Avenue due to settlement. We currently have a bond for $68,000 on that line to protect Musburger Water and Sewer. In order to get a permit for construction of the new addition, we must resolve this issue. It is less expensive for Rutherford County Schools to pay the amount of the bond than to dig up the road to repair the line, since it's 20 feet deep under the surface of the road. Again, the amount is $68,000, and this will resolve the issue once and for all. Recommend approval, the motion to approve the expenditure of $68,000 payable to Musburger Water and Sewer for repair of the sewer line at Cushing Avenue as presented. And correct me if I say anything wrong here, they found roughly 3/4 of an inch sag in an 8-inch line. Nobody else is on the sewer line but Oakland Middle School. We've had no problems with that in percentage of there, water doesn't stand in a sewer line, it goes, but it doesn't really make sense to dig it up and repair 3/4 of an inch. And if they're willing to do this so we can start Oakland Middle School, it's pretty good, to me.
Board?
Is this a bond related to the original construction, or is this a bond that remains in place as long as we're using this?
It's a bond that is for the original construction, for it to pass the inspections in case it didn't. We've carried it up until now. My estimate for repairing that road is $320,000, so we're going to get out $260,000 cheaper by just buying the bond out.
Other questions, Board? Number 10.
Number 10 is the Blackman High School Naming Request. Blackman High School is requesting permission to name their baseball field after David Price. Recommend approval, the motion is to name Blackman High School's baseball field after David Price.
You're quite proud of that young man. Doing well.
Any questions, Board? Number 11.
Smyrna High School Renaming Request. Smyrna High School is requesting permission to rename their swimming pool the Trumpire Aquatic Center. Recommend approval, the motion is to rename Smyrna High School's swimming pool the Trumpire Aquatic Center, and he's taught swimming there for a long time. He's a really great guy and done a lot, taught a lot of children to swim and safety. Probably the best swimming program in the whole county as far as for the kids that take PE and learn to swim.
Has several stories of students who have gone on to rescue in life-saving opportunities after they left school, and I think that's amazing.
He teaches them how to tie legs of jeans together to create floats and stuff like that, it's just a really good program.
Any questions, Board? Number 12, Mr. Director.
This is the Signing Bonus Incentive for Hard-to-Staff Subject Area, Tab 4. The Signing Bonus Incentive for Hard-to-Staff Subject Areas submitted to the state each year is presented for the Board's approval. Recommend approval, the motion is to approve the Signing Bonus Incentive for Hard-to-Staff Subject Areas for 2018-19 school years presented. I think Dr. Anthony says this is the same one, same group of supplementary positions we had last year, correct?
That's correct. We had a one-time signing bonus of $3,000 for 612 math, for the chemistry, the physics, and the rural languages, and that was broken up into two parts, $1,500 in the fall, $1,500 in the spring, and an additional early signing bonus in those areas if they sign before March the 1st, so that we would have first dibs on them. So we actually had six that wound up getting the $5,000 combined out of that by signing before March the 1st. Also, we have the signing bonus for ELL of $1,500, and the Board Certified Behavior Analyst at $1,500.
Remember, right, they got half of it at a certain time and half of it, do you remember when that was? I forget.
October and April.
They get it immediately in March and then?
I was thinking October and April, is that right, Jeff?
One, once, right? One time. Any questions, Board? 13.
13 is your revised policies. The first one is policy 1.704 under Charter Schools. The purpose of this revision, the policy has been updated to comply with the new state laws that increase charter school application fees and creates an authorizer fee starting in the 2018-19 school year.
Board? We were all present, of course, for all of these, so you may not have anything to say, but if you do interrupt, go ahead.
And the second one is policy 2.806, bids in quotation. Purpose of this revision, the policy has been updated to reflect changes in the state law, allowing local education agencies with a centralized purchasing authority, with an authorized full-time purchasing agent, to increase the threshold required for competitive bids from $10,000 to $25,000. And the policy 5.802, qualification and duties for Director of Schools, purpose of this revision amends qualifications to delete with preference for a doctorate degree. And so I think the recommend approval, and we'd have to do this for each one, to waive the second reading, second meeting limitation, to allow the Board to make, take immediate action on the policies presented, so each policy would then be presented separately.
Questions, Board?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not aware of any pressing needs that would require us to abandon our own policy for two readings on this adoption. Is there an explanation for the recommended approval motion?
Excuse me, I believe the only one with a time-sensitive, time-sensitive policy change is that of the charter schools. That is because that charter school application, those are due by April, and we won't be meeting again until March. We may want to apply that to the first one, but the other two, there's no time-sensitive requirements on those.
Since we're going to go ahead and do that one, we might as well go ahead and do the other two at the same time. It would, I wouldn't see the need to have to wait, since it already passed the policy committee.
Then we should eliminate the policy that we have two readings, if there's, you know, such a nonchalant, you know, perspective on the two readings. I think the two readings are important and essential and appropriate here, and we have time before an April deadline, we certainly will meet in March. I think we meet something like 12 times in March, and we'll have opportunity in March to approve even the first motion.
I guess my question is, what are you going game of waiting?
Adherence to our policy.
I don't understand what you're saying.
Our policy says that it's passed by the policy committee and then passed on two successive board readings, and that's our policy. If we want to ignore our policy, then we can ignore our policy. I don't think it's a good precedent for this Board to ignore our own policy.
I believe we've did this before.
We do do it from time to time, in the summer, when we're about to print the student handbook, and there's a pressing need for it.
The point is, we did it before. If you've got a problem with it, you want to change it, change it the next policy meeting.
But the policy is in place, that it takes two readings.
Answer my question, have we did it before?
We have.
Okay, why can't we do it Thursday night?
There's no compelling reason to set aside our own policy.
As far as I'm concerned, I'll be ready to vote on Thursday night.
I've discussed it with our Board Attorney, and our Board Attorney agrees that there is no compelling reason to set aside our own policy, if we would care to hear his input on that.
Policy does require two readings on, for to adopt new policy. Your policy with respect to new policies does require two readings for them to be approved by the Board. In the absence of some compelling reason by which the Board should take them up, need to waive one of the readings, you are required to have two readings on policies according to your own policies that you have adopted. So it would require two readings on these policies, for these that you have coming up.
I understand what you're saying, but the point being is, if we waive them before, why do we waive them before?
I don't know what, I don't know the circumstances with respect to ones you're talking about. If there's no compelling reason by which these can be waived, the policy does require, your policy does require you have two readings after they're adopted by the policy committee. If for some reason you want to go back and change what that other policy says, that's another issue for the policy committee another day, but as it stands, the rules on the, for your new policies are, do require two readings, as they stand currently, read today. And that's not to say any of these policies are good or bad, so that's just what the rules are on adopting new policies.
That's what you want, that's what we do.
That's what the policies are.
I understand, but if we did it before, that's where I have a problem with it. I can vote twice, just like, just do it again once, so.
I'm reading this again, I'm sorry for the delay. Recommend the approval motion to waive the second reading, second meeting limitation to allow the Board to take immediate action on the policies presented. Well, if this is going to remain on the agenda for Thursday night, then we're going to have to vote on it. I don't see another way to avoid that. I would, I wouldn't, I'm not sure that it makes a difference, frankly, but you can always vote no, and when we have another policy meeting, which we will have within a couple of months, I would imagine we can change the policy, if that be the, if that's what the committee wants to do.
Would it be appropriate for there to be a ruling if the motion is out of order, because it is in direct violation of our own policy?
Well, I guess I'd better ask you thoroughly then.
What is the purpose of the second reading? Have we ever overturned something in the second reading versus the first reading?
I think the history, and it's common with legislation, where you're changing what the old rules are and going to a new rules, is to make sure that it's been publicly vetted in ample time for anyone who's a member of the public to come before the Board and voice comments in favor or in opposition to the proposed change. So the purpose that you have repetitive readings, which you have with, before the city council or state legislature and so forth, is basically to make sure the public's had an opportunity to appear if they have opposition or support they want to make in support for a proposed change. So I think the historical reasons for it is to make sure that the governing body, not just the school board, whatever governing body is reviewing the change, has time to look at the issue and make sure that it's what they want to do, and give members of the public a chance to comment in favor or against the proposed change. So that's why you have these repeated readings for things, so to make sure everyone's had a fair chance to say their say with regard to it before the change is made. So, and it's not uncommon with respect, I mean, if you go, most city councils have the same thing, if you have zoning readings, if you go in planning commission with changes there, you'll have multiple readings, just to make sure everyone's had a fair chance to make comments with respect to the proposed change. So you can say it delays the approval, which it does, so it does, makes it slower to get it approved, but I guess legislatively, the history of it is really there to make sure a change has been fully vetted, and anyone who had any stake in it has had a chance to make comments on it before it's made, and that's the reason for it. And that's the reason, historical reason for it.
Well, what would you, do you have any advice here?
I think, well, I'd say there's no compelling reason by which I've heard voice as of tonight to go ahead and waive the second reading. And I know in the summertime, when we have to get rules out for the student handbook, there have been times where we've changed policies, and we had to meet a deadline to get a handbook published, to get out to students and parents before the school year started. So I'm aware of some instances there where we have waived the second reading in order to get the rules in place to comply with the state statute, or something's been mandated that we have to do, that we want to make sure is in the student handbook, so I know those have happened. I have not heard anything, if there is any reason that these have to be adopted now, I guess we open a listing for those, but in the absence of any compelling reason by which we are to, can waive second reading, your policy is to have a second reading on it, and I would say that's normally what you would have to do in the absence of some compelling reason not to follow that rule.
So what perhaps we need to do is remove the recommendation approval to waive the second reading from the agenda. Go ahead and vote the first time, which is the next paragraph, and put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Whenever the next meeting, and get it approved the next time. And we have many meetings in March, so we can approve it at one of the other March meetings. And that would be compliant with our current policy as it stands today.
Okay, that's what we're going to do, unless somebody starts throwing chairs. I think we'll do that. Any comment? Ms. Michael, if you would, remove that paragraph? Ms. Michaels, if you would do, remove that paragraph from, okay?
I recommend the motion for week two for the policy 1.701, 2.806, and 5.02.
Okay.
I think it's, he wanted them broken into three separate, so I think, I think you'll have to have that motion, approve policy 1.704, approve policy 2.806, so we'll vote three times instead of one time for the third.
And that's, that, you said, you said 1.701, it's 1.704. Okay, that's okay, I just wanna make sure it was right on your copy. Okay. Anything else, Board? Number 14.
Number 14 is transportation, this is for information only. The transportation department has put on the last bus of the 11 that were budgeted for the 2017-2018 school year. This brings our total fleet to 268 buses. There have been two contracts turned in since the beginning of the school year. This puts us at number 24 out of 64 on the second priority list. For six days in the month of January, we hosted the area state-required safety in-service training for all drivers conducted by the state pupil transportation, state troopers. We had a total of 473 drivers attend the in-service, which includes drivers, sub-drivers, and activity, activity drivers, which are people in our schools that, you know, carry teens and that sort of thing. The troopers also inspect all buses each year and re-inspect buses which have been involved in accidents. We've had 12 non-preventable accidents and eight preventable accidents with four injuries through January 2018 compared to 10 non-preventable accidents and two preventable accidents with 13 injuries through January 2017. In the bus, bus fleet, we have 232 transit buses and 36 special education buses. The average age of our fleet is seven years old. After 15 years of age, all transit buses can get a three-year extension. Buses that have obtained the three extensions are required to be inspected twice a year by the state pupil transportation inspectors at a cost of $770 per year borne by the contractor. Special education buses are not eligible for the extension, however, the years of service has increased from 12 to 15 years. And so, below is a breakdown of our fleet by years of service, and you've got that total, how many years for each one of those in that table? All 268 buses now have active GPS units, and we're able to monitor routes, stops, times, and speeds.
Mr. Snell, of course, is here as usual, and the director, if you have questions on that now, would be an excellent time. Snell, we don't thank you enough, or your bus drivers and others that do, I think, a terrific job. Number 15.
Number 15 is resolutions, there are two resolutions. The first is a resolution in opposition to requiring advanced placement and international baccalaureate students to take the culminating exam to obtain additional grade weighting. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education is responsible for providing a local system of public education, and whereas the Tennessee State Board of Education has made certain changes to the uniform grading policy 3.301 to require students enrolled in advanced placement and international baccalaureate classes to take the culminating exam to obtain additional grade weighting, and whereas said policy provides in relevant part, advanced placement Cambridge International, International Baccalaureate, and college-level exam program, CLEP courses, local education agencies may elect to offer advanced placement Cambridge International, International Baccalaureate courses, or align their existing courses to college-level exam program, CLEP exams. Local education agency will ensure that these courses incorporated the learning objectives and course descriptions as defined by the College Board, Cambridge International, or International Baccalaureate respectively, and prepare students for culminating national exams that if passed, may be accepted for post-secondary credit by post-secondary institution. AP, Cambridge, International, and IB courses and CLEP are eligible for additional percentage point weighting for students who sit for the aligned culminating exam. Districts may award additional weighting to the grades of students who have completed an AP, Cambridge International, or IB course, or a course aligned with industry certification of CLEP exam prior to sitting for the culminating exam. If quality points are awarded prior to participation in the culminating exam, the district shall have a policy to remove the quality points if the student does not participate in the culminating exam by the end of the school year in which the course was completed. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education desires to encourage students to enroll in more rigorous classes, and whereas some students enroll in advanced placement and IB classes for reasons other than seeking college credit for said classes, and whereas some IB classes do not offer culminating exam, and whereas payment of a fee is required by National Testing Administrator for the culminating exam, which is not paid for by the state of Tennessee, which could present a financial burden to certain students. And whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education wants to keep advanced placement and IB classes open and desirable for students of all economic backgrounds. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Education as follows, the Rutherford County Board of Education would ask the State Board of Education to reconsider the requirement that students take the culminating exam in order to earn the additional grade weighting for taking advanced placement and IB classes.
About there, isn't it?
Yes, sir. And we talked about it the other night. They allow five points, you know, if, if you take the course, we obviously can order three as just an honors, because an honors-level course is three, but kind of, we really kind of disagree with the fact that you should have to take the exam, but the, the learning comes in the class, and we want to encourage students, and we had some, for example, interesting enough, Vanderbilt will not accept some AP credits, that's a pretty high-level exam, but in certain courses, I know in one case it was, that Central Magnet, the kid wanted to take the physics AP for the practice and the content knowledge, but then wasn't really happy to have to pay ninety-something dollars at the end to take the exam, which was not gonna result in credit to the college. And the state nor local pays for that exam, so it falls on the student. So, we're just saying revisit this, take a look at it.
Questions, Board?
You know, when Mr. Reed and I were working through this, you know, I, I wanted to press for the legislators to pay for those exams, I wanna have the Department of Education pay for those exams, you know, any number of things, but I, I think that the language that Mr. Reed has given us here is just excellent, and I thank him for his efforts. I was concerned in public comment about this, constituents have brought up that other systems have put this in place before us, and I was certainly under the impression that we kind of found out about this in our last board meeting, and we were making the change at the semester break. I know in a, a neighboring system, the change was in place back in August. Are we behind the curve a little bit here?
They did pass it last year.
They didn't pass this until November of, of 2017. That's at the base of that, so there's no way you could have this, this in play in August when it, the policy wasn't passed until November. It's on the policy statement there, self at the bottom.
That's one thing parents were complaining about, you didn't tell us when we signed up for the course.
Yeah. I've seen reports that neighboring systems were aware of this in the spring of 2017, had it in place in August of 2017. Were they just simply preemptive in expecting the state to take this action?
They'd had to have predicted in a crystal ball what the state was going to do, because they did not vote on this until November.
They had the first reading, I think.
They probably had it first.
And the second reading was the one in November, I think, which was the one.
Some of the public comment that I saw, there was some, I think, apparent confusion with some of the parents in that they kept referring to the policy itself, which has been in place for a long time. But this specific caveat to it that changed the ability to award the five points if they didn't take.
Take it away.
Was an actual change to the policy, and that's what, I was thinking it was October, but.
You're correct, Ms. Moore.
But, yeah, they're very, very rightfully upset though with, for the parents that, and the kids that had already signed up for these courses that might have thought differently, and it was too late, obviously, for them to drop the course at that point, so.
Each system's handled this quite differently. We've called around and talked to different systems and how they're trying to deal with this with their parents and their, their students as well.
So, on that line, Mr. Zag, I have to make a question because I know that's one of the things too that I've seen, again, some of the parents posting and things, is that they've talked with other schools, even schools within our own system, who are saying, no, we're still awarding the points. Is that indeed accurate?
We're awarding the five points for the first semester because changing the grade through our student information system would be virtually impossible if, Ms. Moore, if your child was in an IB class, for example, and we, it's a, it's a full-year class, at the end of the first semester, obviously, I'll award you a first semester, and you receive credits in Rutherford County and as well in most systems, and a half's credit for each semester. And then I wouldn't be giving you a grade if you can follow this, it's kind of convoluted with how the, the systems work, is, that would be inaccurate, because I could not give you the five points for the first semester. You earn that point for each semester because of the way credits are awarded in school systems in the state of Tennessee. And otherwise, I'd give you a grade, and then I'd turn around in May and say, oh, I'm sorry, you didn't take a test, and then I'd have to change your grade where you possibly, that possibly could affect, you know, your status within your ranking in your school and other things as well. It's, it's virtually impossible to follow that policy in a way that some people think it reads.
Yeah, so...
Did that help or confuse even more?
So, for that first semester, that August or September through the end.
You're awarded the five full points.
Whether I took the test or not.
I, you can't take the test until May.
Good point. So, if I don't take the test in May, my five points for that first rating period still stand?
Yes, ma'am. I can't, award you a grade that's inaccurate.
Can reassure the parents of that.
Yeah, yes, ma'am, and that's what we've sent to all of our administrators and assistant principals as well. They've been given that in writing and how we're gonna deal with that.
Okay, and we as parents should be able to see that reflected on the, on the student system, information system anyway, right?
Absolutely, you can go into, now in the parent portal part of that and see that.
Thank you.
And a second semester, you know, since it's an IB class, we can absolutely award honors, and honors by the state of Tennessee, we're granted three points for that even though.
Thank you.
Other questions for the Board?
You do not have to pass the test, you just take it.
And pay the money.
A little bit, and pay the money.
Insurance update.
No, we haven't finished resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry, my fault. Another resolution.
Uh, resolution number two, in opposition to method of evaluation of pre-kindergarten and kindergarten teachers and administrators under State Board of Education, policy 5.201. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education is responsible for providing a local system of public education, and whereas the Tennessee State Board of Education has made certain changes to the teacher administrator policy of 5.201 to, in regards to the evaluation of certain school personnel who do not have individual Tennessee value-added assessment scores, and whereas said policy provides in relevant part, for teachers with individual Tennessee value-added assessment system scores, the student growth measure shall be, shall be compromised of TIVAS scores. For teachers, librarians, and counselors, and other groups of educators who do not have individual TIVAS scores, local education agencies may choose from a list of student growth portfolio models that have been shown capable of generating an individual student growth measure. The list of options will be approved by the Department of Education prior to the start of each school year. The current list of student growth portfolio models includes fine arts students' growth portfolio model, world languages student growth portfolio model, physical education student growth portfolio model, pre-K kindergarten student growth portfolio model, first grade student growth portfolio model. In order to implement one of the student growth portfolio models, above LEA must assign a district portfolio lead to verify the portfolio submissions and to facilitate committee reviews as needed. Select and provide portfolio evaluators at a ratio of one evaluator for every 10 portfolios in each content area. All portfolio evaluators must be trained and credentialed by the department to assess student growth according to portfolio model, and implement the state's multiple rating categories to measure levels of performance on the growth model. Whereas the evaluation model requires a school district to assign multiple portfolio evaluators at a ratio of one evaluator for every 10 portfolios, that means that multiple teachers and school personnel are required to be diverted from their normal teaching and job duties to evaluate other teachers. And whereas the new policy requires portfolio evaluators to receive additional training, thereby resulting in even less class and class preparation time for teachers and school personnel, and whereas a substantial amount of class and class preparation time has already been lost due to state mandated ta-, testing, and whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education believes class time is a critical component of successfully educating students, and whereas the evaluation model adopted presents a time-consuming process, taking teachers and personnel from their class and class preparation time and further detracting from normal job duties, now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Education as follows, the Rutherford County Board of Education would respectfully ask the State Board of Education reconsider the policy to revise the sections pertaining to evaluation of pre-K, K kindergarten teachers. This is one we, we have not done, we've not done a K, pre-K under this model that we, I discussed with you the night we talked about this, this, this is brand new, to where they go in and look at artifacts of what the students doing at one point in the year, go back and look at the same type thing later and measure the progress. Sometimes that is filming of students, sometimes it's a document or writing or something, and you can kind of imagine what that might be at the K or pre-K level. We really do not know for sure at this time how much difficulty it will be, for sure, until teachers have gone through it one time. I'm one of those people that I like to be able to dig my heel in and say, I don't like it for this reason, and we've got some, I think, here, but I'm not as firm as I would be had we done it one time, and I could be as very specific and say, I don't like it for this reason, and this, and this, and this, because this is what happened. Now, the other models there, even when I was principal a number of years ago, they had a rubric model for librarians, and a rubric model for guidance councils is best I can remember. Folks, we're 25 years ago maybe, but thi- this is a different one because they're trying to add a growth component to it. Those early ones were evaluation models, and they were different from teacher models because a guidance council does something different than a teacher, and so does a librarian. But, but they're adding to these to try to get a growth portfolio on it that is much more, well, it's more opinionated maybe than where you have a student taking a test, and you've got this score and that score, you know, so it's a little bit, it's, this is certainly different. I don't think we know how different yet for sure.
Are you recommending that we wait on this resolution?
I mean, I, I mean, it's your call, I would be comfortable if you chose to, because I'd like to be able to write X, Y, Z, but that's Don Odom, because that's just the way I am. I did, I did say that I do not like them taking time out of class, we, we, the state didn't tell us to do this, but we decided we're probably gonna give them three substitute days, bring them up here in our lab, they will, they look at these things from other districts online, we can talk about the scoring and then doing that. As of now, this last week, our teachers did upload their stuff onto the system, that actually went smoother than we anticipated, where they were really nervous early on, they came out smiling and feeling better about the upload, but that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about here, those that then have to go on and score one for every 10, you know, that's attending another district somewhere. And so, that's, that's the part that does concern me, but don't know how long it's gonna take. They estimating 22 hours. Is that 15 or is that 30? We won't know till we do it. That's my only take on it.
Either way, if it's 15 or 30, it's more hours that we gotta pay for, that state's not paying for, we gotta come up with local dollars to pay for that.
Or tell them to do it on Saturdays or other times, or at night, which I don't feel comfortable doing to teachers. And they're paying for it, is what it is.
comfortable doing to teachers. And they're paying for it is what it is.
It's not a fair request.
Going to get bigger every year, is it not?
Yeah, if they move to the first grade and then possibly the second grade. Third grade picks up with 10 ready testing, of course. We do have a second grade assessment, uh, which they bring, which is, they did create that's coming online too, but it's not, it won't have a growth because there's no first grade for it to grow from. What do you, are you hearing anything?
They're just, they're, they'll be discontinuing the second grade for the portfolio model the year it comes on. This year's the last year for that program.
Give the paper pencil test to the second graders is what he's saying.
About parents, if it's on film, I, I don't, evaluating one student, there are other students sitting right there. Maybe you wouldn't want your child to be on a film, on a desk. Is that a legitimate concern that I'm expressing maybe or not?
Chairman Jordan, are you asking me that?
Well, I was looking right at you, wasn't I?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm asking you, Mr. Zagor. What do you think?
My opinion is that it's a state assessment. Um, I don't know if we have an op, option of that, and it is within a closed cell. It's not public. Um, it's a certified score, just like a certified score for, uh, one of our other written assessments for writing or something like that. There's, there's data and information on all of those.
Okay. Who are we grading here? Who are we evaluating?
Teacher.
We're evaluating the teacher.
Okay.
But we're using a student
Yeah.
to, as the, as the instrument by which we're evaluating that teacher.
A sample of students. And how many students was each teacher supposed to have? I forget.
It, it's more than one student per class.
Four, five, six, I don't know.
It's not the entire class.
The, the public has, the public has clearly said, "Less testing, not more."
Right.
And this resolution certainly reflects, uh, as you say, this is only going to get bigger. And sometimes it is important to stand in objection to it at the very suggestion of more testing when the public says clearly, "Less."
I think we discussed this the other night and I don't know if we had an answer to it, but, um, I, I, as Senator Katrin submitted his bill.
Hit it is and it was
Less testing.
in committee tomorrow, I think. Uh, his is for student assessment. So, I don't think, I really don't think
That's a good point.
his bill addresses this, this particular thing because you're not grading, you're grading how well the teacher did helping students progress, is what they're looking for. I mean, of the 20 students at the kindergarten class, they're not going to, each student's not going to have a score. And, well, not a single student would have a score other than the growth for the teacher. This, this is a teacher.
We, we discussed in our previous meeting the challenge of getting our teachers to serve as portfolio evaluators.
Correct.
And in essence, we have an opt-in circumstance for the teachers where we say
As an evaluator.
At, right. We say, "No teacher is compelled to be an evaluator. We would like for you to opt in to that." And so, what was our statistics on that, trying to get?
We had one central office staff worker or staff member that I forced to, and one volunteered, uh, teacher.
And we need how many?
We needed 15, over 14, but we'll probably end up needing 16 in the end.
Okay. And so, if likewise, if we said to the public, "We're going to ask for volunteers among your students to opt in to serve in this capacity," I wonder how many families would opt in to be a part of this? I dare say, not very many. Our resolution certainly reflects the will of our constituency.
I foresee a lot of problems with this. And something just tells me this is not a good idea, but perhaps I'm wrong. Any other questions on, on this resolution and do we have other resolutions, Mr. Director? That's it?
Two tonight.
Okay. Insurance update. Dr. Anthony just reached for a microphone. She's excited about the insurance.
Yes, uh, we'll be having that meeting, uh, coming up at the end of the month, so we'll have some report in March. They did cancel the January meeting, so.
You have nothing, is that what?
I don't at this time.
Okay. Well, that's exciting report. Uh, substitute teacher update. I notice we have some information here.
Dr. Anthony is going to make that presentation. One of the things that we did send out to principals, which you saw, we would like to get feedback from their, uh, school teams, their leadership team, their other administrators about either policy changes or procedures or ways to enhance and increase the fill rate for substitute teachers or things that we might do. So, there's a whole language with substitute teachers that, and I asked Dr. Anthony, "Would you please be willing to kind of get up and educate the board, uh, about some of the language and some of the things that when we get these suggestions back, you'll kind of have an idea of what they're talking about?" And two, um, where does Rutherford County stand in the mix of other systems based upon some data that you've received? So, this is kind of a learning opportunity with no test to follow, so.
Unless you want me to come up with one.
Please don't.
Okay, so I'm just going to kind of give you an overview of some information that you may or may not know about factors that influence teacher attendance. So, there was a national study by the National Council on Teacher Quality that was conducted five years ago. Uh, there was many articles that were out there, but nothing at a national research level, uh, except for this study. And they stayed 40 of the country's largest metropolitan areas, where she know that our county is the fourth largest in the state. Um, and so, this would be the results in the 12, 13 school year that would be expected of a school system or a size. So, on average, public school teachers were in the classroom 94% of the school year, missing nearly 11 days of a school year. I thought the next part was kind of, um, interesting. It said that 16% of all teachers were classified as chronically absent because they missed 18 days or more in this school year, accounting for almost a third of the absences. So, I asked PESG to pull the report. I went by it page by page, embarked everybody that had 18 or more absences. Then, uh, I referred, uh, the information to, uh, Ms. Bowen, who is our FMLA and extended leave, um, specialist. And, uh, she and I looked at the information and we found, uh, a pattern. Um, the pattern was the people who missed 18 or more days were on those, uh, doctor documented type of leaves. Um, there were 120 in the fall, and out of those 120, uh, only nine of them, uh, were part-time and did not meet the standards for FMLA. So, our teachers who would be classified at, at a national level of missing 18 days or more, um, they had their doctor's documentation and they meet our FMLA guidelines. Um, um, some of them had to do with surgeries that they missed or caring for their parents, those kind of items, and you'll see that on another slide coming up. Uh, but I thought that was interesting statistics. We're at 4% and here we are five years later, um, and, uh, the national statistics is at 16%. Uh, that kind of gives you a perspective of where we are, um, on, on large amount of days missed. Um, the research did say that there are other studies out there that do show, uh, that, uh, having some kind of incentive program for absences for teachers has worked, but they did not find that in the national study. Uh, they also, in their study, showed districts that rolled over if they did not use their sick or their personal leave to the following years, um, there was about a point six, uh, difference in attendance. 94% versus 94.6 attendance rate if they were rolling over the, the 10 sick days and the two personal days. Um, also very interesting, they said that 20% of all teacher absences were due to professional leave in our district. Looking at the fall percentages, we're at 15%. So, we're under the national averages of five years ago. Um, and then we're right at where they were talking about five years ago, a combination of sick and personal leave. Uh, the national study was under 75% and we're at about 73. So, the other types of absences filled the remaining percentages, and so I thought we might look at the types of absences that are available in the codes, uh, that all the administrators and the teachers are able to see. So, there, there are a lot of codes that you'll see on the next slide in different categories. So, you can see the ones that are for sick, um, sick with no substitute, and that would be people like our, uh, RTI coaches, our guidance counselors, those type of positions. There's some positions within our school that, uh, we do not, um, fill with a substitute when the person is out. Uh, you can see the bereavement leave, such items as jury duty, military leave, um, P1 days, um, which are professional allocations that are given to each school. So, I thought you might want to see a breakdown of what is given to each grade band. For instance, for grade bands K through five, they receive 15 days to be able to use within their building, uh, for professional development opportunities. And you can see the other breakdown for a total of 1,292 just alone in the P1 days. So, we went up, um, just a little this year with Rocky Fort having to, uh, add them to our middle school numbers. So, that allows the principals to be able to have days, uh, if their teachers need additional trainings or there's different opportunities that they want to take part in. Uh, P2 days are our professional build-out days. P3 days are professional school paid days. Um, P4, we have, um, accreditation with, uh, usually using on average in the district, two days, not per teacher, but just two overall. We have a teacher from Segal High that attends that for us. Um, P5 days are vacant position or HR allocation. The principals often face this if a teacher leaves, and until they're able to find a replacement, um, they often have to get permission to use P5 days to fill those vacancies. And, um, PES is professional other such as court. Maybe they're testifying for someone on behalf of the district or those kind of items. So, that's kind of a little bit of a brief overview of all the different types of categories. Um, that might help you understand when they talk about that other category. You know, other category would be such items as jury duty, military leave, court, those kind of things. So, here's the statistics I was alluding to earlier. Other, when you see on the chart, this is from first semester, was at, at about 12%. Professional leave at 15%, knowing that nationally five years ago, the study said that on average, a professional leave is at 20%. Uh, we're right in line with, uh, the statistics from five years ago on personal leave and sick leave being at, uh, 73%. So, the chronic absenteeism, as I was showing you earlier, nationally at 16%. We're at 4.25 for the fall, uh, with all the doctor's documentation that Ms. Bowen, uh, requests and requires. Uh, and nine teachers were not on long-term leave but missed 18 or more. They were our part-time teachers that just did not meet their criteria for FMLA, which requires them to be full-time. So, that kind of shows where we stack up. Uh, additional challenges, I spent yesterday at Cookville Tech with MTU and Bobby Luscher and her group, and we were meeting with Mariville and, um, all the different UTs and Trevecca and Mipsco, and they all seem to be having the same dilemma of the number of students that are enrolling and graduating out of their teacher preparatory program. MTU is seeing recently a 41 to 45% decline. Uh, they, uh, you know, MTU once was known as the normal college. It was known for teachers, um, graduating there, and now it's the smallest college on campus. Um, and so, recently, instead of seeing a huge graduation in the spring, what we've seen in the past at being at a graduation usually around 300, this spring we're at 148. Um, so, hopefully we, we have, uh, formed this relationship, uh, with MTU and we have been attending all their events and job fairs to try to pull them in our way and get them in our buildings with student teaching. Um, of course, we continue to show the growth, and so, they're coming, and so, we need to get our students more involved with, uh, going into the field. MTU's looking at different ways of trying to recruit in their area. I know that Tara and, uh, Brian and his group, um, they've been looking at teaching as a profession at the middle and the high school level, just to kind of get that interest going so that they will be able to have those kind of experiences and go into the field. Uh, some of the other items, uh, to consider, PESG has been hard at recruiting and they, so they've been working diligently at upping their number of substitute candidates. Um, Mrs. Woodson has been talking about how that they've gone to, um, advertising through message boards, the TV, the radio. Uh, they have six full-time employees. I know she called me, uh, when I was in Cookville, uh, the morning at 5:00 and was telling me, you know, of the increase in number of teachers who are out being sick as well as, um, substitutes who are having to call in because they were sick as well. So, they are working diligently, uh, for us to try to recruit additional substitutes, and, uh, we have definitely benefited, I know by seeing in the HR department, uh, being able to pull from their hirings, uh, to be able to fill our positions, uh, as things come available. So, we're very appreciative of that. Um, another thing that, uh, constraint they have to work under that we, we don't have to work under is the Obamacare mandate that if, if you're a full-time employee, which means that you're working at least 30 hours per week, then you have to be provided insurance. Uh, so that's one thing we don't have to avoid, uh, where we, we can avoid worrying about it because that, it's something they have to look at. If we were to ever pull substitutes into our district and handle it through, um, the central office, uh, we would not be able to have them working more than three days a week, uh, because if we did, we'd have to provide that insurance. So, that's something to think about, some strengths that we would have to think about. And, uh, PESG, here are some of the benefits. I'm not going to read these to you, but you can kind of see the things that they help us with, um, employment process, payroll, unemployment, compensation. Um, you know, like I said, we have six people that are working diligently to try to help us fill those positions. So, those are some of the items that they provide us with. Uh, some of the surrounding districts, uh, Mr. Odom asked me to find out, um, some of the large districts around Tennessee, what they're using and what their fill rates are. Metro did get back with me and, uh, they use Source for Teachers as their, um, wheelhouse. And so, basically, they said they have about 300 substitutes not filled per day, so they have a 50% fill rate. Uh, that's with Source for Teachers. Uh, Williamson County uses Frontline. Um, they said that they're at about a 90% rate this year, at a few times at 80. Severn County also uses Frontline, uh, for the last few years, and they're at an 85% fill rate. Uh, Hamilton County, also 85%. Knox County, they were asking us what we were using because they're in the same dilemma, and sometimes they were hitting at a 70 rate. So, you can see those items. Um, I talked last, I guess it was last Friday, I talked with a board member from Coffee County that was calling around because they were looking for a substitute provider. And then Putnam, since I was in Putnam yesterday, they said that they use Frontline and, um, they've had to increase their substitute pay rate several times to get them up to where they are now. They're at 85% fill rate with Frontline. So, that kind of gives you an idea of what other systems are using. Um, some of them were struggling, um, you know, some were new at it. Uh, I think Clarksville Montgomery said that they were just switching over to Smart Fine Express, and so they didn't have a exact percentage for a first semester on their fill rate, but they had switched from Frontline because they just could not get that rate up. So, that's kind of a little overview of, um, surrounding systems. Some possible strategies, and Mr. Odom was talking about how that, uh, he has given a directive to the principals to look and examine, uh, possibilities of how to increase teacher attendance and how to work on reducing teacher absenteeism. Uh, some items that, uh, research is proving to be somewhat helpful. Um, having a teacher call and talk to the principal as opposed to just calling or logging in tends to deter absenteeism. Um, many are using across the state that I talked to, they've used, they're using the professionalism unit, uh, in the evaluation, the team model, uh, to incorporate attendance and what, setting that expectation with their faculty about how good attendance impacts instruction. Uh, some systems have been requiring doctor's notes, uh, the day before or after a holiday. Uh, some systems, and I think this was, uh, Lebanon Special School District and Hamilton County, they told me that they have been paying teachers 30 days, uh, per unused sick day with a cap of 300. And, um, some districts, and I believe it was Knox County, that did the payment at the time of retirement. Um, some are doing not a monetary, but, uh, more of a recognition award. Uh, some are doing stipends. Uh, some are doing stipends in shorter time phases, so if there is an illness, then they Some are doing stipends in shorter time phases, so if there is an illness, then they have a feel like they have a time to recoup and still be part of that incentive. And several in the state were doing a set pool of money and dividing it among the teachers that have perfect attendance. One district had 5,000. They had 20 total teachers that had perfect attendance across the district, and they divided that amount. So the information that we'll be getting from the schools will hopefully give us additional resources that we can look at and examine to see additional ideals that we might try to incentivize the teachers. That will be coming to our office on February the 27th, or by February 27th. So again, we're trying to see if we can find ways to look at our data. Three different charts were sent to the principals. Last year's complete data for the 1617 school year, first semester of last year, the 1617 year, and the first semester of this school year, the 1718 school year. And all of the different substitutes that you saw in the categories of absence's slide were broken down for the principals, so that they can discuss that with their teacher leaders and their administrative teams, to see if they can pinpoint areas that they can improve on specifically to their school as well.
I think you may, did you miss the slide of our experience?
Oh.
Teachers?
I may have.
I just found that very interesting. She did some research about, you might go back, it's about the, I don't know, what's the fourth? It's in our copy here, but it may not even, may not be in yours, but anyway.
Didn't put in the PowerPoint, I put it in the research, yes.
That in 2013, 14, 21% of our teaching staff had one to three years. In 1617, it's now up to 35%. As you look, in 21-plus years, again, it was 16% in 1314, 1617, it's down to 10%. So part of the thing we're seeing with all this accountability piece is, teachers aren't staying as long as they did. So you actually have a younger set of teachers than we did, which makes them more prone to have maternity leaves and children too. I mean, that's just one of the natures that goes with it. But that was just interesting to me.
Right, and it really goes along with our millennial studies.
It's accelerating kind of quickly here to me.
Right.
Look at that.
Right. It was steady, and you know, for a long time, it was about 55% were with 10 years or less experience. Now we're jumping up to 70%. And the national statistics is showing with the millennials coming onboard and them staying in the jobs for three years or less, that that will bear an increase. And so we will see more of them moving into these jobs before 2020 coming up. So that was just an interesting fact. When I was working on our E-Plan, I thought it was an interesting trend. We stayed pretty consistent, but last year, we saw a increase.
Tell us your, Dr. Anthony holds a title in the National Human Resources Organization. Would you tell us what, tell the board what your position is?
Okay. So I am the president of the state HR organization, and so I've been the upcoming president for this past year. So March the 1st, I'll take the reins. And we meet with all of the HR directors and discuss items such as this across the state, both in the fall and the spring, and then also serve with the National HR Organization on the chair of the Constitutional Bylaws Committee. Not many people want to deal with all the law, but love it, don't you Lauren? So you're going to love it. So I've been chairing that and working with them on national presentations. I just wrote an article about, actually about the millennials and how that's going to impact our job force, and that's going to be published in May on the national level for the HR best practices. So, you know, our difficulties that we're having, it's not just to our district, it is a national trend. And I appreciate the board being so proactive on trying to help us to identify and look at this. And I really feel like the principals, you know, with giving them this time and this opportunity to look for their schools, they'll be able to come up with some solutions that we can work toward and, and, you know, keep our rates, you know, ahead of everybody else. I feel like they're able to do it, and they're working hard, and some of them are coming in with some great responses, and I appreciate that.
Some of those professional days, just kind of for your knowledge, also too. For example, a lot of the competitive things done by career and technical education, where they go for soil judging or other things, some of those are during the week, some are on the weekend. Ms. Pilgrim bills that in her budget and does that. There are other, sometimes the state will ask us to submit two or three teachers to work on the standards when they were revising standards. I always like for our people to be on the front end of that, folks, because you kind of see, what's the thinking going on? Why are we developing this standard? And when they do that, they very often will fund the substitute for our teacher. So when you look at P-days, a lot of times that funding is coming from a different source, be it the federal government, the state, or something like that for those professional leave days. So we, the number of days per school, came back when we were negotiating a number of years ago, we talked about the high school, middle, and the more times that they were to go somewhere. You know, one of the issues you run into sometimes, suppose you're taking your choir to a competition at Nashville or somewhere like that, and you're going to be gone all day, who takes the rest of your classes that day? So we give principals some professional days so that they can have somebody in the classroom while somebody's doing what we want them to do, to take a choir to, you know, a contest or something like that. So it is quite complicated. Our people do a good job of trying to sort through it and track it. But anytime you have a question about, let's, we'll talk and see what we're kind of addressing.
I appreciate your time. I know you put a lot of time into this, and I guess I sparked a lot of this. And what caught my attention was the increase in our budget item for subs, being over $775,000 over the last two years. So that's a lot of money that we have increased in two years just for that one budget item. And I think we're on the right track here. It's just the focus on what we can do to minimize subs. We, the less subs we have, the better off we'll be as a school system. And look at ways to get teachers that 4% or whatever it is in the classroom that's missing absenteeism chronically.
One of the reasons for the increase, we talked about this, Mr. Samuel went back and looked, when we went from the old program, advantage was at about 85% fail rate. When we went up to better than 90%, one of the increases in that cost is because the fill rate became higher. Because if you're not able to fill it, you don't send a check to anybody. So just spend some time trying to sort through exactly what you were talking about, and part of it is, is because we now have a higher fill rate. What are you going to say?
You may not have had time to see it. I sent you the January financial summary today. I thought I'd sent it earlier. My apologies. The two numbers that you see for subs on that, this year, year-to-date, and last year, year-to-date, it's about, it's somewhat higher, but there is another pay period that we got processed this year. If you look pay period to pay period, we're $44,000 lower this year than last year, and it's probably because of more difficulty in filling vacancies. But as far as our actual expenditures, we're very close to last year's level with another school open right now.
I can only see this problem getting worse. So as we grow, we're finding less teachers coming into theirs, into this profession. So I just, I can just see the subs just getting totally out of control here if we don't keep an eye on this problem and try to get creative here a little bit and see what we can do to encourage the ones that can come to work, to be at work. This is not to throw the teachers under the bus and say, hey, you know, you got, we got a serious problem here with teachers coming to work. That's not the point. The point is, is to look at what we can do to entice them to be, and set good examples for our students. That's, that's all I'm after here.
A few years ago, Ms. Barnes was pretty much, I guess her go-to lady on that. We had a program that would pay pretty good amount of money for attendance incentives. Mr. Young has already said, and it lasted two years. It didn't work. And much to my, I was shocked that it didn't work, really. Money doesn't, money doesn't seem to be the cure-all here. I am far, and I've said so before, raising our substitute pay one more time. And that's, that's about as far as I'm, I'm going to go. I couldn't be convinced otherwise. I'm not sure that that's the, that's the solution. And I worry about, and this is what we're fighting, we're fighting the state that pays, well, us, 10 days with no penalty. And, I mean, you know, it's just hard to fight that. Say, well, if you're absent, we're going to send you a check anyway, at least 10 times.
Twelve.
And twelve, count the, count the person, right? And I worry about, I agree, I mean, you've addressed all this. The day before the holiday, the day before a long weekend, the Monday following a weekend or a holiday, I get all that. That really puts a lot of stress and strain on the staff that remains there. And I worry about this 61% here. And these were, these, I'm sorry, but these are people that are taking their one day a month. That's what they're doing, in my opinion, in many cases, and getting, and getting paid for it. I don't know how we can, I, I'd say since I've been on this board, which is not as long as anybody else up here, we've probably spent more time talking about attendance, both students and faculty, than any other maybe single subject, I guess we have. And we're, this is a start. I'm really interested in this, and you might want to, if you would, Mr. Odom, you might want to talk about this just a minute, if you would, that you've, you've, Mr. Odom has asked each principal to meet with their administrative team, their school leadership team, and they're going to come back with some suggestions and whatnot.
You're going to compile that and give that to you?
Yeah, that's pretty quick. That's the 27th. I'm very interested.
Well, they've had it. They've had it for two weeks now or so. What we wanted to do is get a whole half-year. We talked about this before Christmas, but we, what we've done is taken the whole first half last year and the whole first half this year, and then the whole year last year, and looked at rates and percentages. So it'll be interesting to see what suggestions they might have. They're actually closer to it. I realize it, they're closer to it than I am, because I live it every day. So it'll be interesting to see what they come back with.
Is 18 days the right threshold for chronically absent?
That was a national study. Shit, we didn't set it, I don't know. Uh... Ten students in terms of the chronic absenteeism, that's for students, is 10%. If we had a full 180-year, 180 days, that would be 18 days. Typically, snow days and all, you're finished, it's 10% of every, how many days you have available for students. You know, they talked about putting teacher attendance as one of the components of ES. It's still lying back there on that table to look at, but they didn't have enough data to make a rule. They didn't think it this time. Now, will it come back? I can't say.
Most professions, no, that would not be, that would not be acceptable.
I wonder, I wonder if that's something in Rutherford County that we would look at as, as we're doing this examination. We're getting input from the, from the principals, the building administrators, perhaps input from the board is appropriate as well, where we represent professions outside of education, we represent the community, and we could reflect that a threshold of some other nature in Rutherford County is going to be viewed as, you can still take the days, the state gives them to you, but we're going to identify it as chronically absent.
I think it all goes back to accountability and setting some guidelines and having each principal to monitor that. They know the ones that are absent.
They build it in professionalism. They tell us, there is a component of the teacher's evaluation.
Yes.
And I'm just curious, are the ones that have been chronically absent 18 days or more, do we terminate them? We have terminated teachers.
And anyone who is, so anybody who is reporting at the levels of one and two, that's...
We turn on a view roughly 60, 70 people per year. 60, 70 teachers per year. That's been true, my sixth year, with other five. It's been very close to that number the whole time.
So you're saying, Dr. Anthony, that, just reading off of this right here, that we already incorporate attendance as a measure in the teacher evaluation and professionalism?
Let me turn my mic back on. Yes, many of the principals are already using that, and using that as a determination of what is considered acceptable in the profession. So attendance, you know, dress attire, involvement with school activities, those kind of things. They include that in addition to what the state group is.
Well, as you're well aware, as a former principal, when you have classrooms that, well, maybe there's nobody there, but I can assure you that when you were principal at Page, you had somebody there, somebody was in that classroom with those youngsters, I would guess 100% of the time.
Oh, yes.
But trying to find somebody sometimes is, you got to be pretty inventive, am I right?
It's true. It's true.
And that drives these principals crazy. I'm sure that the, the third or fourth thing here on this list was to pay teachers $30 per unused sick days, that's what I was referring to a while ago. And I think we paid them more than 30, didn't we? 50?
500 if they had perfect, and then it scaled back.
At the end of the year. And minus $50 for each one of the days they did not use.
I think. It's been a few years. I know it was 500 if they had.
Well, if you showed me a check at Riverdale High School at the end of the year, beginning of the summer for $500, I'd have jumped over the school with delight. Ever, ever now, it doesn't make any difference. I don't, I just don't understand. I'm sorry. I'm old-school, I guess. Keep working on it, Dr. - now, this is very good, by the way. A board, yes?
I just had a thought while y'all were talking. I looked at the BEP allocation file, and for the 201617 year, their allocation that they built into the, was 42,552 sub-days. The sheet that we sent you for total for last year, we were at 39,184 and a half.
We didn't use as much as the...
We didn't use as much as, now, the daily rate they give is nowhere near our average daily sub-rate, but, yeah, we were, the BEP total came out about 2.7 million, even at that lower daily rate. So we are using less than the BEP formula generates, which is a plus.
Any other questions for our HR director? Thank you, Dr. Anthony, very much. Ms. Bowen, thank you for being here as well. Directors update?
Attendance today, 92.54%, which is about 2% below a February day, something roughly to that. We are working on the budget. I just, some things for you to kind of think about, and we'll present it to you, 13th, I think, is the first time. We do have to set aside the two and a half million for Rockville High startup fund. Remember, we said do two years, 5 million. We have learned that the state is going to require a higher contribution to the teacher retirement system. So they're going from 9.08% to 10.46. Because of the number of people we have, it's going to cost us two and a half million new monies. The medical insurance for Rutherford County, that's, that increase, our part of that is going to be 3,750,000. So that will have to be built into our budget. The governor put in about 55 million this year to improve teacher salaries. That's about half of what it was last year. So last year was called 4%. So it's roughly, you know, if they do the same thing, maybe 2% or somewhere in that. Again, we always have more teach, every district has more teachers than the state minimum. It costs us about two and a half million per 1% raise on the certified side. Another thing we're, that's kind of, we didn't know, we talked to INA out tonight, and the student attendance thing, they've been purchased by Power School. We've had the cheapest program. We've had the cheapest program. So, we don't really know, there's a potential there with other districts that do not use INL and used a Power School or one or the other, then there's maybe paying three to four-hundred thousand dollars more than what we've had to pay. So, I've never known a company that purchased one that kept competing platforms going. They always merge them. That's just a business model. So, my guess is, we're about to see a pretty good change in our student management cost of [inaudible]. And there'll be more, we'll talk about it.
Board? Anything else, Mr. Director? Is more? Anything on the state legislature?
I defer report until Thursday, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Holliday, anything on our boys at the Potomac?
I'm gonna defer to Thursday as well, and just let my fellow board members know, the chairman has asked me to put together a written report in addition because of the recent trip to DC. So, check your emails for that coming in the next twenty-four hours.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holliday. Number twenty-one, new director of schools' training start date. The recommended approval motion to have the person selected for director of schools to commence their employment on whatever date, 2018, to train with the existing director of schools prior to assuming the position of director of school on July one, 2018. We discussed this briefly, and I think we had, I don't know, three or four different dates that, and Ms. Michaels and myself, we kinda wanna, so we can tell Mr. Bennett and whatever, and since he's doing the vetting right now, we kinda wanted to have a date. We don't have to have one, but it's open for discussion.
Some, if it happens to be a principal, some may wanna finish graduation dates or something, you know, I don't, again, I don't know. They may run into a little problem if it's too early. That's just my thought.
The, well, clearly, whoever applies and eventually is hired, any, any number of dates could be convenient or inconvenient for them. We just don't know. The, a, well, I, we just, we just don't have any idea. Most principals are not gonna leave their post until their school year is over. I wouldn't think, but I can't decide that for them. And it could be that, you know, they have to give notice. I mean, we just don't know. But I don't, I don't know how to attack this, so I'm hoping that one of you will tell me how to attack it, and then I'll just act like it was my idea. But nobody's saying anything. Okay, well, we want this individual to have some time in, in, in May and June, June for sure, to shadow our director. And we can pick whatever day you would like, but again, we're gonna have to come up with a date here, some discussion, and we can put it on the agenda and adopt it Thursday if that's, if that's what you want.
Mr. Jordan, I will say that in the previous search that brought Mr. Odom here, this topic was not raised until we had decided on a candidate. And then, at that point, Mr. Reed helped us work through contract negotiations that certainly included the appropriate start date. My personal feeling is that it's premature to take this, to take this issue up and make any kind of conclusion about so many unknowns.
Maybe we don't have to have a date. Maybe we just tell Mr. Bennett that we will discuss this with the candidate at that time, Ms. Michaels. I don't know, unless, we got other board members that may wanna comment, but that may be the way to go. If it's, if it's a local person, I mean, Mr. Odom was in the building, right? And it could be somebody that's in another Rutherford County school, it could be somebody that's off somewhere that may want more, but I don't know. So, Mr. Holliday may be right, it may be too early.
Mr. Odom, as far as the duties of, of the principal of a, of a school, for all practical purposes, as far as ending that school year, would the end of May be, be the time that they would probably wind down?
What, what I, I've thought a little bit of what to do with the transition, how it would happen. One of the things that I would like to do, if, is for kinda all of our departments here, I'd set a day and a time for the people in special education to come in and talk with me and the new person that's coming in, somebody in instruction, somebody in attendance. Well, you kinda know it. You know what you know. And sometime, if you're in a school, and maybe, not up here, well, I didn't realize y'all also did that, or that function. So, we'd kinda divide it up. What is maintenance? What do you do? Introduce people, that sort of thing. So, I think it'll help people with the transition, kinda look at each department, each group, and maybe what their functions, what they do, and then it'll be their choice to what changes they may wanna make.
If we chose a June first starting date, that would give you thirty days to work through that process. Would, would thirty days be, be appropriate?
I mean, I would think so. It'll be my, but I'm, whatever you want to do.
Yes, me, the question, do we really have to set a date in stone? You know, could it be something even, you know, commence their employment on the earliest, you know, possible availability, something, I'm not coming up with the exact wording I want, but, yeah. Because again, I could see the necessity as far as that training curve and, and time with Mr. Odom, depending too on, you know, where the candidate comes from, their availability. So, it is kind of a moving target still at this point. So, I mean, I think it would be in our best interest to have that, whoever the individual is, spend as much time with him as possible, but, yeah, we've gotta look at those other factors as to when they're gonna be available.
Could we, could we say, we, a preference to start on June first? I don't know. Just throwing that out there. Does that, does that set it in stone, you know?
Well, we can word it. If you intend to make a motion on Thursday night, just-
Well, it gives us another, another day to think about it as a board, if anybody has a preference. June first seems to be reasonable to me, but the board may have a different, different desire.
There's not much difference between saying June first and on or about June first. You know, I mean, I don't know what that means exactly, but-
I don't know that we have to make it a mandatory start, or at least they suggested.
Why then, why then have this date if it's not a mandatory start?
Why not?
Because?
It would, it would show that, that we have a desire for our long-serving director would have at least a minimum of thirty days to do exactly what he just said, that he would like to do with that new director.
So, that is a criteria that we, that we want for a candidate? If they're not available thirty days prior to the start date, then we would eliminate them?
I wouldn't wanna go that far.
I don't know. You, you're kinda pulling words out of left field. I don't, I don't think I insinuated that at all.
It just seems, it just seems premature. It just seems premature to get into start date. It's, it's negotiations of the contract.
I think we can suggest one. I don't think we have to put it hard in, in, like, as Moore said, I don't think it has to be in stone, but we could give a suggested start date, just that that would be our desire, and we're just making our desire known. You know, I don't think it has to be that hard.
That's another way of putting it, a suggested start date would be.
On or before?
Yeah.
You know, if we're looking at wrapping up the search, which if I'm looking at the calendar and remembering correctly from our conversations with Mr. Bennett, the director searched by the end of April, it looks like at the latest, April twenty-sixth, and an offer is made, and contract negotiations started with any candidate, whether it's someone from inside or outside or what have you, that's gonna enable them to give a full month's notice wherever they are, and certainly enable any candidate to finish out their school year as well. So, I don't, I don't see where that would be a concern that we should wind up facing is that we off, make an offer to a candidate at the end of April, and they're not willing to start by June the first. Does that make sense?
Yes, I would think so.
Want the job bad enough, I think they figure out a way to make that happen. And certainly, if it's someone from inside the system, we can help them figure out a way to make that happen.
Didn't Mr. Bennett kinda allude to that, that they want the job bad enough?
Yeah.
And they probably wouldn't apply for it and would accept.
Well, I would realize too, I would think with this timeline, that we're gonna, the expectation for them to start by then is gonna be there.
Sure, sure. Well, think about, think about that between now and, and Thursday night, and if you wanna wait, that's fine. If you wanna set a date, that's also fine. Of course, we can, we can change the date if we need to. Any other comment on start date? Okay, general discussion by board members. I have about four here, and I wanna, I'll go quickly. First of all, the WGS fifteen minutes that they, they set up for us every month is next Tuesday, and Ms. Moore said is doing that, and then in March, Mr. Holliday is doing that, that's, I believe it's the twentieth, both, both days, twentieth of February and twentieth of March. If you have a specific date or whatever, I haven't looked ahead any further. If you wanna do something in April, May, please let me know. You've got in front of you here, the, it goes all the way to June twenty-first, and also the graduation dates. My goodness, Ms. Michaels, you have been a busy little beaver, haven't you? Oh, I tell you what, it's amazing. The, our, our regular meetings are in black, and, and special call, director searches and so forth, and interviews are in red. And note that the time changes on some of them. They're either five or six, one of those are five-thirty. That's Health and Ed, which is May twenty-second, don't have to worry about that now. Just asking you, please, and there are a lot of meetings on here, and I'm fully aware of it. If, the closer we get to a meeting, the more difficult it becomes to change it, and because of guests that might be here, and in this case, of course, possible future directors, interviews, et cetera. And if there's a date on here that you know that you're not gonna be available, please look ahead and contact Ms. Michael so she can make this a, a, make a final copy of this. This is not the final copy. This is our, our working copy.
I don't know, it's laminated.
I know. Well, she's been busy, I already said that.
Looking at it, I don't know if there's rates to reschedule anything either.
Really? Unless we meet on Sunday.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Blair, for that helpful comment. Mr. Bennett is coming in on, on Monday, March fifth, and he's going to tell us that night, y'all correct me now if I make a mistake here, he's gonna tell us that night, I don't, we don't know how many people that he's going to recommend that we consider, he didn't set a specific number, but we think it's gonna be like four or five, right? Am I okay there? And he's going to, as part of his presentation, for lack of a better word, he's going to suggest some questions that we need to ask, and remember, every candidate has to be asked the same questions. So, we're gonna have to divvy them up in, in some way, which really shouldn't be a problem. And then, we may have additional questions. And again, we have to ask every candidate the same question. So, if you have a question that is not on Mr. Bennett's list, and he, I don't know what will be on his list, then we're gonna have to divvy that up, or you're gonna have to ask it every time of every candidate, which is fine. That's okay. We just don't wanna ask this, I don't wanna ask the same question as Ms. Moore asked. I don't wanna do that. So, okay, so we need to, we'll need to discuss that on the fifth as well. Now, a, a, a problem here, as I looked over these dates over the weekend, and kinda what we had agreed to do, have we, have we said that we want these candidates to have a tour? Are we gonna insist on a tour? We're gonna give them a choice on a tour? No tours? What, what's, what do we do?
The only thing that I remember from discussion is that one board member would be accompanying for that tour, as opposed to the expectation or the invitation of multiple board members accompanying that tour.
Okay, well, let's come back to that question in just a minute, 'cause that's, that's exactly the next thing I wanna talk about. But first, let's decide whether we're gonna have tours or not. If we're gonna have tours, that's fine. If we're not gonna have tours, that's fine.
We certainly should have tours.
Okay. We have one person that wants to have tours. And we're not voting tonight, so I'm, I'm gonna need some sort of vote on that on, on Thursday night. But, are other board members, do you have an opinion?
I think it's a good idea.
I have no objection to it at all. Whatever y'all wanna do is fine with me, you know, whatever.
The only issue is that if you vote for a tour, then you're saying you're gonna be available during the course of the-
That's my next question.
-that one, so, you know, that's, that's something that has to be taken in consideration. If you vote for a tour, you, you have to be available.
Ms. Moore?
Question, yeah. So, based on, since I haven't been here for any of the prior searches, you kind of, can somebody kinda lay out for me, when we say a tour with a candidate, what it looks like, what it's made up of?
We've, we've got three board members that have been through this before, and they can, can weigh in on this. I would envision, just speaking about the tour itself, not when or who's going, that we would, we would take the individual to a high school, a middle school, and an elementary school, and we wouldn't wanna ignore Smyrna West, or Holloway, or Daniel McKee. But, once you go to three or four places, you, I mean, it's tough. Comments?
We were just talking about making the chairman-
I think it's most appropriate.
Official tour director?
I think that came from Jerry Hodge, my boy, young. He's laughing. Well, the, the director will do his part, but not your part. I don't, I don't know, to answer, I mean, Mr. Blair and Mr. Hodge, y'all were here with their tours. I think giving Ms. Odom a tour would have been, I don't know what y'all did.
Have been redundant, I would think.
Well, I would think so. Mr. Gill, and certainly Mr. Watson, the same. But, what do you think?
I don't recall. My gut feeling is, we probably gave tours last time. So, they're out of, they're out of county.
I wouldn't see a need for the ones that are already in the system, but the ones that come in out of county or out of state, yeah.
And along those lines, I feel like that March fifth may be the appropriate time to hear a motion along those lines. For candidates that are outside of our system, it's certainly appropriate for them to not look at a piece of paper that says that Oakland High School, Riverdale High School were built in nineteen-seventy-two, and therefore, they must be dilapidated, you know, rundown, terrible facilities, not in the least. Our custodians, our maintenance staff, the excellence extends beyond the classroom in Rutherford County schools, and that's what we have a responsibility to show to that candidate that is not familiar with our system. But I think on March fifth, when we see the basic profile-
But I think on March 5, when we see the basic profile of the recommendations, when the board coalesces to a slate of finalists, that it would be appropriate at that time to take up the question of tours.
Let the candidate decide whether they want a tour or not?
Well, I would certainly support offering a tour, and no prejudice toward those, perhaps an in-county candidate, that would say, thanks but no thanks.
Right, it's the same day.
I'd, I'd be inclined to say that if the candidate that we're talking about is from outside the system, that a tour be mandatory.
Mandatory tour for an outside the system candidate, and a choice to inside the system candidate, is what you're saying?
If we do that, and I don't really see where that would be a problem. I mean, we might have an inside candidate that says, hey, I'd really like to go see such, such a school, I've never been there before.
Well, they probably haven't.
If we offer the tour to all candidates, then we have an impartial offering to all candidates, and if an outside the system candidate were to be so bold as to turn down our tour, let the chips fall where they may.
Yeah, I get that.
Ms. Michaels, do you remember the outside candidates when, were they, were they, were they given the opportunity for a tour? Do you remember who?
And then if other board members want to go, they can, but they didn't, it was not one board member.
Because I think there was, there were, there were two. And, okay. I thought I recalled that we did, the, the, Dr. Wright, that's now Lebanon, I believe, and then the gentleman from Chatham County.
And let them rest with them, and then they come back here for dinner and start their interview.
Does it matter? Would the board consider it appropriate for me to ask, before March 5, before we know who is going to be recommended for us to interview, that I get a date from you and you be willing to go on a tour? In other words, you pick the date first, and then we'll find out when the candidate, whoever they are, and when they can go. Would you consider that to be an appropriate way of go about it?
I understand your motivation there, and I'll give you the feedback, I find, I find your logic to be sound.
I just, um, right now, not that we'll ever do otherwise, but right now, we're dealing pretty much blind on, on what we're doing, and, and fairness will be the result of that if we wait until we know, I, I just, and, and maybe can pick our own date, I'm not sure that that's entirely fair, but, um, you want to think about that day too? We can't, we're not going to decide tonight anyway, but I don't guess, but. I, I would say what you said, by the way, would be right, I'll just use myself as an example, let's say I said I would go on, on March the 14th, who, who, yeah, that's a director interview, okay, so I'll, I'll say I'll go, I'll go that day, let's just say I said that. Well, I would think any board member that wanted to go with me would be welcome, that'd be fine, in fact, I'd welcome the company, but I have no idea who I'd be, who I'd be with that day, I have no idea what candidate, or if I want to even pick that day. I think that would be a very fair way to do it, is what I'm saying, I guess.
Well, and again, if we give the option, you know, and there's a limited number of outside external candidates, not necessarily going to need it.
Yeah, we may not let them, James George Law.
We don't know. The, the list, the last list I saw had, had six people, I don't know what y'all saw, and I think, gosh, I don't, I know two of them were from out of state, one from West Tennessee, I, I, two local, I don't remember the sixth one, I apologize, I don't remember where they were from.
Were those just candidates that had applied, period?
Right.
At that point, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
And I, I would assume that we're going to have some more, but I-
We have 10 more days.
Right, right, it goes to the 23rd, so, I mean, we could have a couple of dozen more, we don't know. Well, okay, um, other discussion, any topic? Okay, you know what this means, the dreaded adjournment. Appreciate all the input, everyone, thank you, we adjourn.